They're getting ready.
October the seventh, twenty twenty-five. At this time, we'll have the invocation by Vice Chairman Moore Ziegler, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by Commissioner Costanza.
Listen, I'm gonna ask that I have my Pastor Wagstaff. You wanna come down one more time and lead us in prayer? Because we need your touching hand today. Yes, yes.
Let's pray again. Father, again, we come before you with humble hearts. We know we've had a lot of things we've dealt with in this city in the last month, week, and this weekend. But we know that you're still in control. Give us hearts and mind that we can come together as a community. Put together proposals that'll help us be who we need to be and represent you. Thank you for this commission, God, and all that they do, each member of it. I know they have some hard decisions to make sometime, but give them the intestinal fortitude to stand firm on what they believe is the right thing to do and do it. Not only them, but us as citizens, help us to understand that we must be involved. We must get involved. We got to be entities to help make and bring about a difference in this city because we can do it together in this county. Thank you now for all that you've blessed us. Well, thank you for what you've given us to do and give us intestinal fortitude to do that in your name, for we ask all these blessings and we pray, amen.
Amen.
Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I will now call the roll. Commissioner Harris, Vice Chair Moore Ziegler.
Present.
Commissioner Costanza.
Here.
Commissioner Sankey.
Present.
Chairman Singleton.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Okay, we got the public comments. I'm gonna ask Reverend Wagstaff to come back again and remind everybody, we've got a lot on the list today. So, three minutes, you'll hear a little buzzer go off in the back. Then, I don't want to be rude, but I'm gonna have to try to cut you off then. So, please be considerate of everybody's time. So, Reverend Wagstaff.
Thank you, Commissioner, and to this commission. I am Reverend Wagstaff. I work with all collaborating in the City of Community Development Corporation. This year, we are celebrating sixteen years of working in the community. Pastors, business leaders, and other entities, we came together as volunteers and formulated this CDC sixteen years ago because we know that there's a problem that existed in West Montgomery that we need to address. There had not been any construction done for years. And we know that if we start something, the possibility that others would come along and join in. So, now, if you look at E.D. Nixon, where we started at, started from Fairview coming down, look at the changes that are made and happened in sixteen years simply because someone had the necessity to step forward and try to make a difference. We built five homes, renovated, and we got that area looking nice now. And we asking now that we have another project that we undertake to build a new home in that same area. We have raised sixty thousand dollars thus far. We hope to raise thirty thousand dollars during this campaign that we own. And we're asking you for forty thousand so that we can have a hundred and thirty thousand dollars to build this house. It's approximately thirteen hundred and twenty-eight square feet. We make it four bedroom. We have a certified engineer that works with us, Horatio Lee. He went through and did the numbers. He looked at it, asked me to go back again, do the numbers, make sure that we were right. He assured me that we can do this with his expertise because he's a certified builder as well. So, I'm asking you to give us consideration in what we're asking for because we have capacity, we have a proven track record, and we can do this. I ask today if you would consider helping us doing this. Thank you.
Wagstaff, is this a program similar to Habitat where the owner of the house, the person, does a family put sweat equity into the job? Or is it, how do y'all choose?
For the most part, we go through and screen applicants. They have to meet hurt guidelines in terms of their income because we cater to low, very low to low to moderate income families. And we go and do the screening process, verify their income, where they work, and all those type of things. And we ask that if they can to help put somebody in there. But a lot of times, you have people that are not able, but that doesn't stop us. We are volunteers. We work. We don't get paid because all of us basically have an income or retire. And we want to do this to give back because we believe in the community. We either work there, we live there, or we worship in this area.
And it's, firsthand, I've donated to you, Reverend Wagstaff, since I've been on the commission because I've seen what you guys do.
Yes.
And you and Mr. Horatio Lee give all your time, money, and effort to this open. So, you know, you have my commitment again this year.
Thank you.
For donation.
I believe in what we're doing because we're making a difference and we're improving lives and the communities as well.
Well, that's what you do. You make a difference in people's lives in a lot of different areas.
Yes.
It's noticeable, and thank you for what you do.
Well, thank you very much. Any other questions?
Thank you. Dr. Stewart's already spoke. I think she's already gone. Minister Murphy Green, Montgomery Community Action. And Roberta Collins, too. Yeah, make sure you get close to the light.
Oh, good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
To the county commission, to the residents of the city of Montgomery. I am Minister Murphy Green, pastor of the Clay Street Baptist Church, also a member of Montgomery Community Action. It came to our attention that we were excluded from the budget of this commission this year. And we're here to apologize that we weren't a part of the budget process. Not only are we here to apologize, but we also here to make an appeal to the commission. Appeal that they may amend the budget to include us as we have been included over the years. For over sixty years, the Montgomery Community Action Agency has been the agency that has been handling the needs of the least, the unlucky, and those who've been left out. And so, we're here to apologize that we weren't here when we were excluded from the budget. We're here to appeal that you would consider the Montgomery Agency and its budget, in your budget again, and that you would amend your budget. There's a scripture in the Old Testament prophet Micah. He says, "I have shown you, O man, what is good. And what does the Lord require of you? That you act justly and love mercy and walk humbly with your God." He has shown you what is good. Oh, he has shown you what is good to do justly and to love mercy and to walk humbly with our God. Oh, he has shown you what is good. Yes, he has shown you what is good to do justly and to love mercy and to walk humbly with our God. Our chairperson.
And Ms. Costanza, real quick, okay?
I shall.
Thank you.
Okay. Good morning.
Good morning.
Thank you all so kindly. What Murphy Green was saying, I just want to piggyback on that. We need money because our mission statement is Montgomery Community Action Agency combats poverty and advocates for services which will help our people in the low-income area. So, we will appreciate it that you all have mercy on us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And again, we thank you, and again, we thank you for receiving our apology. And again, we humbly ask that you would amend the budget to reconsider us in the county budget. We're a countywide agency for all areas of the county.
Thank you. William Boyd, Lacy Boyd Parade.
Uh, good morning, boy. I just hate to come down here and continue to beg. Oh, man, I see there's a desperate need for funds. The short version, we normally do this like six months out. And right now, we're at it two months. And Chairman Singleton, you are the grand marshal of the parade. And we have not yet advertised yet because, for some reason, the process has been delayed. So, you're the grand marshal. You got, you know, you got to take a stand. Commissioner Sankey.
Yes, sir.
Appreciate if we could receive a small contribution so we can get the parade on the agenda so we can move forward. We can't even advertise. And normally, we would have had the money by now. So, we're just two months out. You're the grand marshal.
Is the chairman and I the only two that have not?
No, I think I have already.
Yes, you know, last year.
I think I have.
Did you?
I think it's already, Teresa had to go.
Yeah, Teresa looked for me, too.
Yeah, but it's twenty-one years. And this parade don't serve a little school. This parade served the entire state. And everyone get an opportunity to see, they get a chance to see that the government funded this parade. So, this is not a selective process. This is for everybody, and everybody can see. And I think twenty-one years have proven itself. And with all the shooting going on, and we just gotta continue to press on in Montgomery. We can't let what downtown stop us. So, we need to show that we all don't want to cause. So, I will appreciate if we could do something like expedite it. Like, we way behind. We got to go out and get commitments from other bands and other states. They want a down payment unless they make a commitment to something else on New Year's Day. So, I appreciate if we can get the ball rolling and whatever y'all can do, do it. But we need to do it like ASAP.
Mr. Boyd, I'm just glad you didn't give up. I know you were so frustrated last year. You threw your hands up and say, you know, that was it. But I'm glad that whatever, the Holy Spirit spoke to you, that you listened to it, to the Spirit, and you came back because you had thrown your hand up last year.
I never throw my hand up. Probably got a little frustrated.
That's what it was, frustration.
With you.
With me, perhaps.
So, I'm not afraid to say it, you know?
Well, sir.
They had to keep it one-hundred, you know?
You have a church in here today.
Y'all know how busy, you're a businessman. You know how busy to operate. You don't operate two months when you're on a six-month project. You don't have to wait till the last thirty days. That's a sign of sabotage.
Well, I'm just glad that.
You'd be at the parade.
Your frustration.
Yes, sir.
Did not stop you.
Unfortunately, I won't be there this year. I gotta give you some bad news. I will not be at the parade. But I'm still gonna send my, I'm gonna send, I'm gonna send. I support you. But unfortunately, I won't be there this year.
And I shared the last time you were here, I will also not be there on New Year's Day. I'll be out of town, but.
Yes, sir. We appreciate, you know, your presence. You'll be there in spirit.
Yes, sir, always.
A.J. Hernandez, Montgomery YMCA, wants to give an update on Kershaw Y, I think it is.
Kershaw, if you did not come to Kershaw Y grand opening yesterday, you missed an event. It was nice. They are doing great things at the YMCA.
Yes, good morning. I will not sing this morning, just to save everybody. But I appreciate the commission and the support. And so, the Kershaw Family Y has been renovated over the last year through the resources provided by the commission, through the ARPA funding. And so, I'm proud to say that we completed that project to an impact that will be seen for generations to come in that community. And so, we're really, you know, really excited for what that's gonna be. The couple highlights of that YMCA is the lobby is what I would call a community connection space. You do not have to be a member of the YMCA to come into that lobby and experience that. We also have meeting rooms in there that also are not required to be a member of the Y to come use. So, our hope is that the high school students, the senior citizens, everyone will come in there and find a new home for them at that YMCA. We also renovated the weight room, the basketball court, and other areas. And so, we are excited to be able to regenerate youth sports in that community for those children there. And so, it's gonna be, again, the resources you guys provide in the budget help us impact directly those families in West Montgomery. And so, we are excited to do that. So, thank you all for your commitment to the Y.
So, I pledged yesterday, and unfortunately, you are, I appreciate you being such a gentleman and not letting people know we cut you tremendously in the budget. Montgomery County cut you, cut you a lot, very much, and it probably hurt you in some ways. So, with that being said, I like to be, if I'm a, if I, you know, if I'm a party of someone cutting you, I wasn't a party, I was against cutting you. But anyway, I like to put my money where my mouth is. So, with that being said, I am committed to doing memberships. I told you yesterday, I'm committed to doing eighty memberships at Kershaw. I'll pay for it myself. We should not make, we should make sure the west side, you know, is an impoverished area, if anybody doesn't know. And we must make sure, we talk about everything else. We talk about what's going on, the bad things going on in Montgomery. And we must sprinkle some love somewhere in Montgomery. And I will say this to you, somewhere in Montgomery, we've invited, we're sitting at the table, and we've let respect walk out the door. We told them they weren't allowed to sit at the table. We locked the door and told them love wasn't allowed to sit at the table. And with that being said, we now need to make sure we get back. We talk about these kids. We talk about what they're doing. But what are we doing to make sure that they don't do it? We as a whole, we cut, unfortunately, I'm not, we cut YMCA budget. And Cleveland Avenue and Kershaw need our help. And I'm gonna ensure, being the county commissioner of Kershaw's in my district, that I'm gonna make sure that those kids have an opportunity in that area.
Thank you.
Yeah, A.J.'s the executive director or CEO of the Montgomery Y.
Depends on what day it is, but yeah, they come with the presidency.
The head guy, yeah, so. Thank you for all you do for the Y.
I think Justin got something to add.
I was just gonna, Carmen obviously said a lot of what I would say, and I echo those sentiments. And I cannot say enough about the organization that the Y is for our community. I'm a big fan of funding the big umbrella organizations that can use our funds and our support with the infrastructure and resources in place to get the best return on investment in our community. The Y is one of those. And the only other thing I'll say was I was, I'm very impressed and pleased that ARPA funds were used on that facility and that that project is done because there are a lot of ARPA funds that are gonna hang in the mix for a while. And so, for you guys to be judicious in that way, that's, that brings great confidence from us. So, thank you for that as well. And you know that you have our support.
Thank you.
That's it, Kendall, unless I missed, I didn't miss anybody, did I? Okay, Kendall, that's it.
We should start charging by the hour. This is pretty good. You guys are getting what you paid for today.
All right, item number one, consider minutes of the regular meeting of September the sixteenth, twenty twenty-five.
Yep, there we go.
Move for approval.
There we go, I can't vote. Here we go, okay, there we go.
Motion carries.
Ooh, if I need voting, look at that.
They got three.
You just need three.
Item number two, consider accounts payable checks and payroll checks.
Need a motion. Move for approval.
Second.
Motion carries.
Item number three, consider utilizing opioid settlement funds to upgrade and purchase automated external defibrillators for patrol vehicles.
Move for approval.
I'll be happy to second.
Motion carries.
Item number four, consider grant agreement between Alabama Department of Youth Services and the Montgomery County Commission.
Move for approval.
Second. Motion carries.
Item number five, consider origami software subscription renewal agreement.
Move for approval.
Second. Motion carries.
Item number six, consider renewal of Blue Cross Blue Shield Medical Dental Pharmacy Benefit Enrollment Agreement.
Ooh, move for approval on that one.
Second.
Motion carries.
Commissioner Sankey. Thank you, sir.
Item number seven, consider professional services agreement renewal with NAF Care Incorporated for on-site inmate healthcare services.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion carries.
Item number eight, consider lighting services agreement with Alabama Power Company for Flatwood Storm Shelter.
Second. Motion carries.
Commissioner Costanza.
Item number nine, consider contract with the Jones Group LLC for governmental relation services.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion carries.
Item number ten, consider proposed twenty twenty-six legislative agenda item to provide for the expense allowance and salary of the Montgomery County Sheriff.
Move for approval.
Second. Motion carries.
Item number eleven, consider proposed twenty twenty-six legislative agenda item to provide for the compensation of the judge of probate.
Move for approval. Second.
Motion carries.
Item number twelve, consider update of Montgomery County Human Resources Rules, Policies, and Procedures.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion carries.
Item number thirteen, consider miscellaneous appropriations to agencies.
Need a motion.
Well, move for approval, was waiting for it to come up.
I'll second.
Motion carries.
Item number thirteen, consider miscellaneous appropriations to education to include, Commissioner Harris sent me two as we were talking, to include three hundred dollars for Brew Tech for the Coast Country Team and fifteen hundred dollars to Brew Tech for the golf team.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion carries.
Item number fourteen, consider miscellaneous appropriations from designated revenue.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion carries.
Item number sixteen, consider travel and training requests from appraisal, detention, district attorney grants, probate, sheriff, and tax and audit.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion carries.
We do have one-way rule item to consider. Consider twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six traffic enforcement grant agreement.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion carries.
Those are all of our items.
Madam Attorney? Deputy Administrator?
Yes, sir, I'll be brief because of time. I'm wearing pink today because, as you know, today is Pink Out Day at the fair. So, if you plan on attending the fair, you can get in for ten dollars while supporting a worthy cause. So, also, stop by the Montgomery County Commission booth. We have fresh hot popcorn, which will be popped today by Commissioner Moore Ziegler and myself. We're working a full shift out there today shortly after we leave this meeting. But if you haven't been out to the fair, please go. And I'm just gonna say one of the, come by the booth and I'll tell you what some of the best food on the midway is that we learned during the Taste of Montgomery, so. I also want to thank, this year, we did something a little bit different with our fair booth. We wanted to broaden participation, and we invite employees from other departments to work the booth, and it's just been fantastic. It's created new connections, new energy. It's allowed residents to see a wider variety of faces that help to make Montgomery County work. And that is something we're gonna be doing moving forward. So, to all of you that stepped forward, I said thank you and helped in any way. But please make sure you stop by and see us at the fair. Thank you.
Vice Chair Moore Ziegler.
Um, I'm gonna be brief. I want to say that my prayers go out to everyone this weekend that were harmed downtown Montgomery. The crime in Montgomery is no one person's fault. It is a, trying to say how you say it politically correct. I know I can say it another way, but let me see. It is a problem that we have, that we all must come to the table and have an honest discussion. Too often, we come to tables and we do the politically correct discussion, not the honest one. We gotta have an honest conversation. We all gotta work together. I said a moment ago that there's a table being set, and somewhere in the midst of this table being set, we, we lost. We didn't invite understanding, respect, and we certainly didn't have love in the building. We've gotta get back to we have all of that when we enter to have this discussion at the table, to figure out what's going on, what's the problem, what can we do? You can't put a Band-Aid on it because, at the end of the day, this sore has festered now and it's seeping over. So, we've gotta figure out how do we fix it? What do we do? I don't know. I don't have the answer. I don't know if any of my other commissioners know if they have the answer. But we at the city, the county, the state, we owe it to our citizens to sit down and have an honest conversation about what's going on right here in Montgomery. And let me say, let's be honest about this. It's not going on just in Montgomery. It's going all over the world. Crime is happening everywhere, and it's at a rampage. Is it because of the lack of education? Is it because of unemployment? Is it because we don't have enough fathers in the homes? Is it because grandmothers are raising children more now? And they're tired. What is it? We don't know. We do know one thing, that in order to pull a trigger and kill anyone, you have lost all humanity. You've lost love, understanding, respect. All of that has gone out the door of you a long time ago. Where do we go from here? But that's a question that we, as city and county and state, have to sit down and have a discussion and talk about, we all. And we have to be honest with each other. We can't blame anyone. It's not about race. Bullet has no color. Bullet has no name. So, we can't say, oh, it's a race thing, or it's those people. Because understand this, it affects all of Montgomery County. It doesn't affect just the west side. It affects Pike Road. It affects West Fair and all those. It affects all of Montgomery County. And until we sit down, all of us, and have that honest conversation, we still gonna have a problem till we find a solution, till we decide that one day, we sit with mothers and fathers. Till we find a solution. Till we decide that one day, we sit with mothers and fathers and say, what do you need in your household to help you with? What you need, what can we help you with? As officials, what can we do for you? Are you tired because you're working two jobs? And you gotta leave little James at home and he tired because he taking care of his brothers and sisters? What can we do? Is it that you went to school and you couldn't quite grasp what you needed to grasp in knowledge today? So what do we need to do for our teachers? Do we need to help them a little more? Do we need to put more principals in the building? What do we need to do? And until we bring our citizens together and have that conversation with them, we still won't come up to the, with the solution. We've gotta find out what do we need to do? Is it that I need to sit down and hug you today because somebody didn't give you love? I'll tell you this short story before I get ready to go. I worked in the school system years ago. And a young man got in some trouble and the police came to arrest him. And before they arrested him, he got sick. He threw up, he was sick. And I asked the police officer, please let me take him in the bathroom to clean him up, kept him out. And they allowed me to. When the young man got out of the youth detention, he came in there to see me. And he said to me, that's the first time I've ever had anybody touch me to clean me up. I've never had that, ma'am. I thank you. And he said, I want you to know why I stole. I have five little brothers and sisters at home and they didn't have any food, so I had to make sure they ate that day. He said it wasn't right, but I had to make sure that they didn't starve. There's a problem that that man said to me, that's the first time he ever had anybody touch him and clean him up. There's a problem. It's deeper than what we think it is. Somewhere, somebody failed that young man. And it's because we failed his mother as a society. Someone said, it's not my problem to take care of everybody else. But if you believe in God, it is your problem. If you believe in God today, it's your problem to come together to find out. God said, faith without work is dead.
Follow that up. Justin, go ahead.
I wanna echo the sentiment of Commissioner Moore Ziegler and I wanna, I wanna answer the question with a, with a true call to action. Um, one of the answers to the question of, of why and what's happening is that there is a complete lack of respect for the dignity of human life. And that's, that's the foundation of the issues that we're facing. And there is no silver bullet for that. There is no single-handed response. We face what some call a, a vacuum of leadership. We face what some, some say is inaction. Well, we are in a leadership position in Montgomery. This, this county and this city, working together, have a serious issue that has to be tackled. And we have talked about it, we've discussed it, we've condemned it, we've prayed for the victims. But none of that is gonna solve the problem. And it's a difficult problem because as I said, and I reiterate, it is a complete lack of respect for the dignity of human life. And that changes not with police on, boots on the ground. That is a factor. It does not just change with one person sitting in a particular political office. It is a factor. It doesn't change by who is in the classroom with our students in school, but it is a factor. In fact, all of those things contribute. So I would propose, and I, I wanna see Montgomery come together, truly come together. And so whether it's the commission initiating this or Commissioner Costanza by himself, I think we need to bring the county commission and the city council, the commission chairman, vice chair and the mayor. And we need to come together with the police chief and I invite our sheriff. And I would also include the superintendent of Montgomery Public Schools and that be the group that starts. And if somebody says, well, Justin, we're trying to figure out, we have our hands full figuring out what happened Saturday night, so we can't do that yet. I would challenge that, say that there's gonna be another Saturday night if we don't start now. And so the folks that we just named that can be in that room, I don't care if that room needs to be at city hall or here at Montgomery County, or if we need to go to MPS. But within one week's time, I challenge our leadership to come together with those folks, law enforcement from both agencies, leadership from both agencies and the person at the top from both agencies. And let's begin the conversation because we owe that to Montgomery. I can't sit through another press conference where we pray for the victims, condemn the actions and say this is not who we are. If it is not truly who we are, then we have to change who we are becoming. The actions of a handful have dictated what Montgomery thinks about Montgomery. And there's way too much good to allow this to continue. And my fellow commissioner is correct, I don't have all the answers. I'm willing to try, willing to work. And I'm also willing to have the hard conversations with people who have the ability to make change. And no one person can do that alone. No one elected official can do that alone. We will not solve this alone. Now that'll be a small group meeting and it will not be a one-time meeting. In fact, I think that it's gonna take months of intentional labor and focus, and I'm committed to that. I think that group ought to meet consistently and we'll expand that group to bring in faith leaders and educators, community members, business leaders. This community deserves that. When, when the community says, what are we gonna do, Montgomery? This is a start. It's time. We include the schools in that because I don't know if you've noticed the headlines, but the students from our schools are involved in these events. And eight hours a day, they're in the care of educators right here in Montgomery. And so they have to have a seat at the table as well. Because where do you learn to respect human life? In the home, we've talked about it's damaged. We've talked about it doesn't have two parents. Where else do you learn? You learn it at school. And I've preached this for twenty years in youth development. You also learn it from the five people you spend the most time with. And for some people, for some of us, that might be a pastor or a principal. It might be a parent. But for these young people, that doesn't exist in their life. And so we have to influence the folks that they are surrounded by. And hopefully, we can influence them to influence others positively as well. Because there will be change in Montgomery. There has to, or none of us wanna stay here. And there's way too much good here to even have that conversation. So one week, city council, mayor, commission chairman, vice chair, county commission members, sheriff if you're willing, chief gray boys if you're willing, and Dr. Byrd. Let's find a place, let's find a time, let's make it happen. I'm committed.
Thanks, Justin. Commissioner Sankey?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I don't have any personal commentary on the condition of our society. I think we have made those points today. But if I could, I'd like to read an email that I received regarding the incident, uh, this past weekend. It actually came from Eldrick, Eldrick Coleman. He's the president of the Alabama Youth and College Division of the NAACP. And I guess it was somewhat of a press release. He sent it to all the members of the, uh, the, the state conference of the NAACP. And this is what he said, "On Saturday night, our community in Montgomery was shaken by a mass shooting that occurred just outside of my home in downtown. As both a resident and a witness, I am deeply saddened by the violence that unfolded in the very heart of our city. Our community is devastated, families are grieving and many are left searching for answers in the wake of such senseless tragedy. Gun violence continued to tear through neighborhoods across Alabama and now it has struck directly at the place I call home. The Alabama Youth and College Division of the NAACP stands in solidarity with the victims, their families and their entire Montgomery community during this painful time. We all call for unity, healing and urgent action to address the crisis of gun violence that plagues our state. We must work together as community members, faith leaders and elected officials to ensure that Montgomery is a place where every individual can feel safe. The lives lost and forever changed demand more than words. They demand meaningful solutions. My prayers and commitment are with Montgomery today and in the days ahead." And it is Eldrick Coleman, President, Alabama Youth and College Division of the NAACP. And I think he kinda captured what we're trying to communicate today. I thank you.
Amen. Sheriff Cunningham reminded me that there is a Faith in Blue prayer at First Baptist Church right across the street here at five PM on Thursday, um, in the parking lot. I've attended some of those in the past, um, and they're normally well-attended events. Unfortunately, I'll be in a NACO, uh, committee meeting Thursday and will not be able to attend, but I encourage you. Five o'clock Thursday, First Baptist Church, uh, if you can attend that. Uh, we've got, uh, I know a few of the Quanis members in here and I just wanna, uh, make a plea to the folks, please don't let what happened downtown be in any way associated with what's happening at the Alabama National Fair. Uh, I've been trying to promote it, numerous fair members have been trying to promote it. Again, it's the safest place in Montgomery, Alabama, probably the safest place in the state for the next seven or eight days until the fair closes on the following Monday. Sheriff Cunningham, along with Art Baylor, heads up the security team. Cedric Campbell is on that security team. He is here today. Justin's a Quanian, uh, he's out there every night, like I'm out there every night. And the police presence is amazing what's out there. We have no issues, zero issues. You have to go through a clear bag policy. You have to be eighteen or above to enter the fair without a parent or guardian. You go through metal detectors that are manned by sheriff's deputies, professional law enforcement people. We have so many different entities of law enforcement on, uh, on the grounds, MPD, sheriff's department, Lowndes County Sheriff's, LEA, fire, uh, sheriff, fire marshals, uh, we have drones. Believe me, folks, it's the safest place that you're ever gonna be in Montgomery at any time. So the fair is so very important because all these nonprofits that many, you saw, many of them come here today in front of us, that's who gets the money. That's who we go out there every night as volunteer and volunteer our time to do. So we can, in the spring, give three to three hundred and fifty thousand dollars every year back to these charities. And it's about twenty-five or thirty and we give the money to, they rely on those. Our attendance so far has been probably the worst we've had in twenty-something years, except for COVID. But it's close to COVID numbers. So we need people to come out and support the Quanis Club and support the fair and support our nonprofits. And believe me, it's the safest place you're gonna be in Montgomery. You can't walk thirty steps without running into a police officer or a law enforcement officer. You'll see sheriff out there, you'll see Cedric out there, uh, every night walking up and down the midway. So please pass a word. Please get people out. It's very critical for our community that we support, uh, we support that. I'm gonna ask my commissioners, can y'all hang around a few minutes? Cause I'm, if we could divide and conquer probably, because I've overbooked and we're way behind on time. Uh, so now I've really overbooked. Uh, Martha Roby's here, um, and she's got some opportunities for us that I'm gonna ask Regina to kinda be involved in. Carmen, can you kinda, and Commissioner Sankey, can y'all meet with them for a few minutes? And then Justin, if you can come and with the probate judge and revenue, and then we'll just, if one ends, we can get together. But if we can kinda do that, save time for each of the people. Can y'all, y'all can meet in my office.
I was about to say, cause you know the air's not working, sorry, y'all. I hadn't had an office since March. Our air is not working.
Yeah, working, uh, please go in my office if y'all would. And, uh, Martha, you'll be going with them and then I'll come in there, so. All right, uh, with that, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned. That people in the audience said aye.